Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of people. We have a packed house tonight as well as a house. We also hopefully have a lot of people watching us on the television. The vacation tonight will be by council. The actress Thompson and the space supplies will be brought to you. Please rise. It was a pleasure leading so much. Y'all should come back every week. Um, we got a couple of things before we get into the body of our meeting. We have, um, I'm gonna ask, um, Coach Terry to come over. While he's walking here, I'm gonna talk a little bit about this basketball team. He says he's come here every year, so. But these guys again were the pound out of state champions, ten and under world champions. And whether or not they played four games, four days, yep, one all. They beat another Anderson team, twenty-one eighteen, first game in the second round. They beat Washington thirty-eight fifteen. In the semifinals, they beat Kickins twenty-nine fourteen. In the championship game, these young ladies beat Thomas and Salem, Titan seventeen sixteen. Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna get Coach Terry to talk about the team and maybe introduce his coaches and talk a little bit about the girls too.
First of all, we have God, thank God, Bobby Bell, Christian Wallace, everybody, Cassius, Sid, Ash, he's great, y'all, let me see, we have him, him, and we have no hat. She's talking about God, these young ladies, uh, we got three ladies teams about twice the size. I thank God, you know, uh, so make it steward who should come out and grab Thomas, our assistant coaches, and what I, what I got this team is we got a lot of work. These girls, they come apart, and I just wanna thank God for them and you. Thank you.
Have to come out and, have to come out. Come down.
My name is Kelsey Dennis. I'm eleven and I go to Centerville Academy.
My name's Shania McBride. I'm nine years old and I go to.
My name is Genesis Cudding Camp. I'm eight years old and I go to New Plastics to the academy.
My name is Aya Boo. I'm T A and I go to.
My name's Ari Gaines. I'm ten and I go to.
My name Deandrea Randy and I, I'm eleven years old and I go to Verinus.
I put your pad on. Congratulations.
My name is Kamari Davis. I'm eleven and I go to Verinus Academy.
My name is Leah Thomas. I'm eleven and I go to North Point Elementary School.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I think we got some moms taking want some photo ops, y'all can keep a photo, I'll try and get out of the way.
Slide on around, have me watch.
You come back this way, ma'am, girls. Coach, where's the coach? Y'all can do a quick. Close camera, we've had a long time. Y'all can come down if you want to look closer.
Yes, we always stay out of the way.
A little pot here going.
Am I good?
All right. Congratulations. A lot of ladies are making their way off. I'm gonna ask some Chief Horn to come up. He has a lifesaving award he needs to present. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Uh, we do have one award presentation tonight. I'd like to call it firefighter Jacob Donoff. Uh, if you remember, in your first February meeting, we awarded Assistant Chief Bratcher the lifesaving award, and his partner wasn't here, he was getting married, so that's a good excuse. So, uh, tonight, we're gonna award the second part of this lifesaving award. On December twenty-second, twenty-fourteen, we were dispatched to Chick-fil-A on Clemson Boulevard for a cardiac arrest. Randy was running calls with, uh, the department that day. He got there first, the engine two followed. Um, Randy assessed the patient. She had no pulse and was not breathing, and he started chest compressions while the guys on the engine brought rest of the equipment in. They hooked the patient up and they shocked her. Randy continued doing compression. Firefighter Donoff used the bag mask to perform ventilations. Uh, they hooked up the Lucas machine to the lady. When she got to the hospital, they took the Lucas machine off of her, her pulse, and restoration started back, and she did survive. This was directly related to the actions of Assistant Chief Bratcher and firefighter Detective Donoff. And, um, Jake, on behalf of the City of Anderson and Anderson Fire Department, I'd like to present you with this certificate of commendation for actions that contributed to saving a life. Congratulations. He'll wear on his Class A uniform from this day forward.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Dave.
So proud of you. Thank you so much for helping people.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Great job.
Good job.
The minutes of our March twenty-third meeting were distributed. Are any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes of March twenty-third passed unanimously. We have four items of old business, and the first item is re- uh, request the second and third reading of ordinance fifteen zero four, authorizing an equipment lease purchase agreement. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the second, third reading of this ordinance, which will provide for the financing of four new residential garbage trucks. This, uh, document provides for funding not to exceed one million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Finance committee looked at this back on January fourteenth, forwarded on you. I would say that these trucks are fully automated trucks, which you're familiar with. We have added another feature, which is on the left side tipping, so it's on narrow streets that can go one time, nice plus, it should save on some funding. These will replace two nineteen ninety-three Fords, one nineteen ninety-five Freightliner, and one two thousand one Freightliner. Just so you'll know the schedule, um, with your approval tonight, this will proceed on notifying the banks of the possibility to bid on this. We are expecting to receive bids somewhere in the May nineteenth to twenty-first timeframe with closing on the seventeenth. Uh, so we'll be bidding those out and, uh, making that award, and we'll notify you by, by this document you're authorizing, the city manager, mayor, and city attorney and finance director to sign, but we'll notify you by email, uh, the low bid. So we'd recommend this to you on second, third reading.
Thank you, sir.
And, excuse me, Mayor, uh, this has four ordinances that you'll need to sign, so when they come around, you'll see four green tabs if you'll sign all four of those and get those back to Peggy. Thank you.
We talked about it a good bit, uh, the last meeting. Any other comments, questions?
Make a motion. We accept it as presented.
A second. First by Mr. Chapman, second by the mayor pro team. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we approve it on the third and final reading.
Uh, first on is Stewart. Second. Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Thank you. Our next items request consideration of an ordinance to rezone fifteen oh two South Macduffy Street from R five Single Family Residential to N C Neighborhood Commercial. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Mayor, I think Councilman Stewart, this is in his district, and he might like some extra time to consider this, so I'd like to just turn the floor to him before I...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we, um, uh, postpone this maybe to the next meeting until we can have the staff set up a meeting with the applicant. I have not spoken with the applicant, and, uh, they haven't gotten in touch with me, but I know in the past, um, uh, there've been some, uh, problems in and around that area, and I just wanna make sure, you know, before we approve it, what's actually gonna go back in there, because we've got a community association, association over there who's doing a lot of great things, and we don't want anything that will, uh, deter what good things are happening over there.
Great. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, we'll, uh, go forward with that. Moving on to item number three, we have, um, request consideration of an ordinance to revise the planned development district document for track A of the Mayfield located off Harriet Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask Maurice McKenzie, he's been working with the developer. The developers are present tonight, so if you have any questions of them, Maurice can kinda give you the timeframe. Uh, I would say on behalf of the people who are developing this, they have held two community meetings, and hopefully that has, uh, given the opportunity for the residents around this development to understand what is proposed. But Maurice, would you bring us up to speed?
Yes, thank you. Again, give you a little background. This property consists of about twenty-nine acres, and this is part of a one hundred and thirty-nine acre parcel of land that was annexed back in two thousand and three, and when it was annexed, it was divided into five different development tracks in zone PDD Plan Development District. And since that time of annexation, two of the tracks have been developed, and that is known as Rockwell Plantation, which you're familiar with, single-family residential district. And this track A is also made allow single-family residential only according to the PDD document guidelines. It's located on Harriet Circle, and it abuts Oakmont subdivision to the south, Oakmont's to the north, actually the city limit, city limit line, uh, bisects this property and Oakmont subdivision. Again, track A currently allows only single-family residential. The applicant wants to do just that, build single-family residential houses, ninety-three of them to be exact, but in order to, uh, to comply with their development plan, they need to make a few revisions to the PDD document. As you're familiar with PDDs, uh, we handle changes just like we do a rezoning. It goes before planning commission for recommendation, and then goes to city council for consideration after that. Uh, when the applicant first approached us with this, uh, they looked to make, um, certain changes, one being changing the minimum lot size in the track from ten thousand square feet to seventy-eight hundred square feet. They also looked to, uh, reduce the lot widths and also side yard setbacks. They, as Mr. Moore mentioned, they did have a neighborhood meeting prior to the planning commission meeting back in March, and a few residents, um, came to the planning commission meeting. The neighborhood commit, meeting was well attended, and there were several concerns that came out of that meeting. And at the planning commission meeting, they, the planning commission recommended denial by a five to two vote, and some of the concerns that were heard at the meeting were, um, increased traffic, some people were concerned about the type of buffers that might be included between Oakmont subdivision and this, um, potential subdivision. And resulting from that dialogue and from the planning commission recommendation, the applicant went back to the drawing board and made further refinements, and as Mr. Moore mentioned, had another neighborhood meeting to discuss with the neighborhood, and that occurred back on April second, and about ten people showed up to that meeting. But the changes that were made and what the proposal currently is now is to reduce the lot size to have an average lot size of ninety-two hundred square feet with no lot less than seventy-eight hundred square feet. And as I mentioned, there were some questions about buffers, and in the current PDD guidelines, all it says is you can have a four to six foot berm. Well, the applicant is proposing to add to that and to add a fifty-foot buffer off of Harriet Circle, a thirty-foot buffer off of Oakmont subdivision, and have the four to six foot berm located in those buffers. And one thing to note, as far as these buffers are concerned, they will not be part of the individual lots in the subdivision, they will be part of the common area and maintained by the homeowners association, so no individual homeowner can go in and manipulate any particular part of this buffer area. They still request reduce the minimum lot width from seventy-five feet to sixty-five feet, and to revise the language to allow side yard setbacks to be five feet. Currently, it says ten percent of the lot width. So those are the changes. Again, the applicant is on hand to answer any further questions that you may have, and I'll be glad to answer any questions as well, but right now, the, the proposal on the table is to reduce the square footage of the lots to have an average lot size of ninety-two hundred square feet, which is pretty typical of what Rockwell Plantation is. And then, um, have increased language for buffers, and then to reduce minimum lot widths, and reduce the side yard setbacks.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie, um, any questions?
I have one.
Ms. Curvin.
You, you said you had some neighborhood meetings. Uh, obviously, there's no houses on this piece property, so when you say neighborhood meetings, you referring to the surrounding?
Surrounding neighborhoods, correct. Yes, that's correct.
That would be like Oakmont?
Oakmont, Rockwell Plantation, and then there's scattered houses in the general neighborhood, but Oakmont, Rockwell are the main, uh, developments.
And all, all of the residents in those areas were notified about these meetings?
That's the applicant, they're the ones that made notification, and again, the first meeting, there were about forty people that showed up, second meeting about ten people, but the applicant may better be able to address how the notification went.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chapman.
I'd like to ask if there's anybody here in opposition in, in attendance for this meeting. Um, that being said, I have not received, this is an area that I serve, and I have not received any additional phone calls from the subsequent meeting that they've had. Um, the only, um, I guess question or, or clarification is to make sure is that the, for Mr. McKenzie, I guess, is the, the thirty-foot buffer that is, is gonna be adjacent to Oakmont and the fifty-foot buffer that is adjacent to Harriet Circle, those would not be required if they left it the way it is.
Correct. The only thing that's required in terms of buffer, if you will, in track A is a four to six foot berm, and, and that's in height. It doesn't address the width of a buffer or anything like that, so you're correct. This is new information that if we left it as is, they would not be required to do the fifty-feet buffer and the thirty-foot buffer.
Okay. Anything else?
With that, I'd recommend approval as presented.
Second. First by Mr. Chapman, uh, second by the mayor pro team. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously. Our last item of old business is request consideration of a resolution amending the bylaws for the Anderson County Developmental Corporation. Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask Alinda McConnell, and she may need some backup from Glenn Breed, they've been working on this, and, uh, she'll give you the background to kinda remind you where it's come from, and, uh, her executive summary, or their executive summary was pretty good about where we're trying to go with the development corporation, but we'll need your resolution to move forward.
Thank you. Um, as you know, certainly with our new focus on economic development and having Glenn as our economic development director, director, we are, um, charting a, a course that will hopefully lead us into a lot more economic development opportunities. One of the things that's important as we move forward is re-energizing your Anderson Community Development Corporation and, uh, having an active board that can help us do the things that we wanna do, um, on our, in our game plan. Um, that board, according to the bylaws previously, was focused on our redevelopment areas and was primarily, uh, because of that, was primarily a neighborhood residential housing, uh, type of focus. The, uh, bylaws that are before you tonight for amendment expand our focus in terms of not just being limited to those geographic areas, redevelopment areas, but to expand our boundaries to cover the city at large, so any economic development project that we have can be located throughout the city anywhere, not just in a particular, uh, one, one piece of our geography. The other thing that we've addressed in the amendments to the bylaws is the composition of the board. If we're expanding our focus to include areas that are not just primarily residential but that are commercial, we want the makeup of the board to be, um, similar like that as well. So there's some specific sectors, um, included in the membership, which would be, um, particular fields of expertise, financial banking sector, the legal sector, accounting sector, and the public sector, but in addition, we would also specify the mayor or his designee or the ci, and the city manager and his designee. So these aren't major changes. Um, the bylaws do call for, as we told you back in February, we, uh, made you aware of these potential changes, got your concurrence, took it to the, um, board that was in existence last, um, and those members met in, on March the twentieth and approved these changes to the bylaws. The bylaws also call for those changes to come back to you for your approval, which is why this resolution is before you tonight. Uh, the composition of the board includes, uh, makeup of between seven, um, and, excuse me, nine and, between nine and seventeen members, and we would propose to bring, uh, that information back to you at another time and allow you to have the opportunity to accept applications and develop a slate, uh, of people, uh, who can fill this, um, board and these seats with the new mission of our expanded territory. So again, it's not, uh, they, these aren't major changes, but it does allow us to focus on the city at large, whether it's residential, whether it's commercial. Uh, we would expect representation from the neighborhoods, just like we've had before, but we would also expect that representation to be expanded to these other areas as well. So it comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, comments, questions? Mr. Stewart.
Um, I guess I noticed that, um, with the development, the development corporation bylaws, it's kinda focusing more so on the economic development end, but I wanna, I wanna make sure, because I know we've got some pending grants out there, that this development corporation is gonna focus on housing as well, because, uh, I know there's some pending stuff out there, we're waiting to see if we got approval or not, but I know the, what we're talking about here is purely economic development, more or less, that's what's mentioned here. And two, um, while we're talking about our broader jurisdictional, jurisdictional focus, I wanna make sure that we're not forgetting about our neighborhoods, because I know that as we tend to move farther out, things look a lot better, but our inner-city neighborhoods are not making as much progress as what our outlying areas are, and I wanna make sure that, you know, that this development corporation is gonna work actively as hard in our inner-city neighborhoods as are in our out, outlying jurisdictional areas, which you defined here.
Uh, you're quite correct. In fact, I think for us, given our, um, new focus on economic development, it doesn't just mean commercial development to us. Economic development means housing, it means commercial development, so it's all of that, and I, I think this gives us the ability to really not just wait on something to come through our doors, but for us to go out there and seek opportunities in all of those areas.
I know, I know it's a little bit more challenging in our inner-city neighborhoods to make something happen than it is in our outlying areas, and maybe a lot, a little bit easier because of whatever, whatever is out there, you know, but again, I just wanna make sure that we spend as much effort, you know, as we've always in our inner-city neighborhoods.
We agree. Thank you.
Dr. Thompson.
Dawn and I served on the prior committee, and, uh, you're quite right, Tony, in, uh, making sure that our neighborhoods are always considered as well as downtown or wherever else you want to, so I have the same concern.
Anything else?
Make a motion, we approve this, Mayor.
Uh, first by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and I agree with some of the concerns, I think. Another thing, I think, too, we, we've been talking about downtown recreation in neighborhoods for a number of years, and, and again, my fellow council members, I don't think, hopefully, that does not deter us or distract us from... or distract us from our neighborhoods. Everybody should live in a pleasing neighborhood, and we've got some challenges in some areas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could add, I would like to ask that I continue to serve on this committee since Dr. Thompson and I have both put in several years, but it kind of was difficult to get it to move forward, but I think with this new direction, we should have some positive movement.
I'll have to think about that, Don. I'm just...
I too would like to consider serving on the board.
No doubt. You guys have been on that board since we've done. Great. Our new business, we've got two items that are somewhat similar, and maybe we will vote separately on them, but maybe, John, you can talk about both of them in your executive summary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The first item is request consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of mutual aid agreement between the City of Anderson and the City of Myrtle Beach. And the second item is request consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a mutual aid agreement between the City of Anderson and Myrtle Beach. Ms. Moore?
I want to cover a few basics, but obviously, we have Chief Stewart here and Captain Mike McCone. A couple of things, you had a lot of good questions today, and hopefully, I answered a lot of those with an email. I'm sure there's a couple more. But let me go back, just for the audience here and those who are watching on TV. The City of Anderson has a number of mutual aid agreements or aid agreements with police and fire departments for, typically, those are for natural disasters, riots, or just things that are not foreseen and not geared up for manpower. You have a couple of those a little bit different, and in the backup, we mentioned one with Clemson University, where your department actually assists with Saturday ballgames, because that's eighty to a hundred thousand people in the community, and their police department doesn't, isn't geared towards that. In this case, this is a regular mutual aid agreement, but there is some specifics for Bike Week. And just so you'll know, that is in, it starts the Thursday before Memorial Day and runs to the Monday after Memorial Day in the Myrtle Beach, North Myrtle Beach area. And again, here are the bullets we sent out. Our city officers had the opportunity to volunteer for this duty. We have ten going. Captain McCone, I listed him as our lead officer on the premises or the site down there. Each officer will receive accommodations. They get compensation, thirty dollars per hour, meals. Chief Webster is the North Myrtle Beach chief. He and Chief Stewart have a good relationship and work together on other matters. And he specifically asked for the City of Anderson's assistance in this matter. So your officers, if you approve these agreements, would actually be assigned to work with the North Myrtle Beach Police Department, even though we're doing both in case there's something that comes up out of the ordinary. Our officers will be primarily directing traffic. They're not answering calls. Again, this frees up those departments to answer other calls. And in every case, a city officer will be a partner with a North Myrtle Beach officer. So I'm giving you some of the details that go with that. Our officers will carpool down. Jim estimates about three vehicles. We will use city police cars, or city, we have some SUVs that will do that. Once they're on-site, those will no longer be used. They'll be partnering with a North Myrtle Beach officer in their patrol cars. All of our officers are either off-duty during this duty or they are taking vacation time. Again, that's much like the Clemson football arrangement. The North Myrtle Beach Police Department not only pay the thirty dollars an hour, they're paying some additional eight or nine dollars to cover retirement contributions, those these wages, premiums for workers' comp liability, social security deductions, matching and all those. So from the standpoint of compensation, there is no cost to the City of Anderson. It's a great opportunity for the officers to earn a little additional income and certainly help assist our city. In addition to us, if you approve this, Charleston County, Lexington County, Lexington City, Darlington City, Conway, and several other cities are also sending officers. Between the two jurisdictions, they're looking for one hundred additional officers to be in mutual aid to assist them during this event. So that's kind of my introduction. I know Frankie's looked at all the agreements, and I have every bit of confidence that Jim would not be recommending this to you unless your city was adequately protected by the officers who will remain here. So Jim, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir. I think you've covered it. I talked with Chief Webster on the phone, actually, today, this afternoon, and they're increasing this. Usually, they have forty extra officers. This year, they've increased it to a hundred. In fact, they expect, they think about twenty-five hundred additional people there this year. Like I said, we met Chief Webster back in 2010. We held an FBI executive development class here. He's been after us for several years to do this. Unfortunately, we didn't have the manpower or feel that we could do that with the city. Currently, in our police department, we're, we have two openings right now. So we are almost fully staffed. And as Mr. Moore said, I think it's a great opportunity for us to partner with another municipality that's asking for our help. We did not seek out Myrtle Beach or North Myrtle Beach. They asked for us specifically. And it's a great opportunity to make a partnership there.
Chief, do you know if the state has helped Myrtle Beach, North Myrtle Beach, in regards to public safety officers?
Yes, yes, ma'am, your. They are assisting, but they do so as they do with a Clemson football game. They're not in the track where they're compensated. They are as part of their assigned duties. And the state calls in additional assistance, whatever their requests are needed.
So the only real expense we have is our wear and tear and the gas of our vehicles getting to and from.
Yes, sir.
And this is for Black Bike Week, White Bike Week. You know, there's two Bike Weeks in Myrtle Beach. Which one is it? One, both?
This is just Bike Week. No differentiation.
They have two Bike Weeks in Myrtle Beach.
Right. But this is just Bike Week.
Memorial Day weekend. It runs from the fifteenth through, I've got the dates in one of them. What are the dates? It runs from the fourteenth through the twenty-fifth, but Anderson wouldn't go until the twenty-first, apparently.
Yes, that'd be that Thursday. Is when we would have to go down and meet, and then we would leave that Monday. Travel back on Monday.
Ms. Lockridge?
I asked this earlier of the chief, but I'm going to ask it again for the people that are listening on television. Concerns about liability. When we have an officer that goes to another jurisdiction and something were to happen, who would be liable in that situation?
We would still be covered under the municipal association, same as if officers here in Anderson. It would fall under that blanket insurance policy.
Okay.
Workers' comp, same. These jurisdictions are also insured by the municipal associations, property and casualty policies, and the workers' comp, which both come through the municipal association, so...
Great. Anything else?
Ms. Kirby?
Ms. Kirby?
Following up on that point, excuse me, I have some other things, too, but on the, our liability policy with the municipal association, do they have a rating system on loss experience so that, like, if our losses are high, then our premium gets high?
Yes.
So these incidents, if these, if this resulted in an incident where one of our officers got involved in something and we were determined to be liable under that policy, our experience rating would go up and potentially would increase our insurance costs. Is that right?
Certainly could. Yes, sir.
You know, I've looked, we've got these mutual aid agreements with a lot of places close by, and they are purely mutual. In other words, if they need us, we go help them. If we need them, they come help us. There's nothing mutual about these. This is all about us going down and helping Myrtle Beach or North Myrtle Beach. Is that correct?
I think it's a combination. You have the standard mutual aid, and then there's, is that not correct, Mr. Kirby?
It's under the statute. These agreements are under the statute. It provides for mutual aid agreements between different jurisdictions.
Well, but I mean, the wording of the actual agreement itself, you know, while it may be authorized by the statute, is totally, has to do with us going down there. And I mean, if we needed to call upon Myrtle Beach, for example, there's nothing in here that I see that would say, yeah, we could call them up here to help us. And that may be fine, I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, I think we would have to, this agreement is specific to that weekend. It's kind of like the Clemson agreement.
Right. And we're not having a Bike Week up here, so...
Right, so, no.
It'd be kind of a one-way deal.
I think this would, though, if we did have something that we would be able to use more to each of them, that's the, it's a fair vote, if that ever happened.
Well, the other thing I want to point out is these two documents, the two agreements, one is Myrtle Beach, one is North Myrtle Beach, and they're very different, very different.
Yes.
And the North Myrtle Beach one is probably, I think, the better one for our, from our point of view. The Myrtle Beach one, you know, it's got some language in it that specifically says that on the legal contingencies for any lawsuits or payment of damages, each law enforcement agency shall bear legal responsibility for the conduct of its law enforcement personnel in lawsuit or payment of damages. In other words, if one of our officers is in Myrtle Beach and they say, you go get this, do, handle this crowd control problem over here, and it results in an incident, and then we get sued, that's our problem, not Myrtle Beach. So I don't think that's a good way to go. It also provides that our officers will be under the authority of the Myrtle Beach police chief. I mean, they'd be taking orders from him. And so to that extent, you know, we, based on what's written in here, we lose any control of our own employees as to what they do or don't do. The third thing I'd like to point out is in the email that was sent out, it says our officers would be mostly directing traffic. But in the document itself, it specifically says that they would, law enforcement services and purposes include patrol services, crowd control, and traffic control, and other emergency service situations, and the maintenance of the public peace and welfare, which basically covers a whole gamut of police work. So it's more than just directing traffic. And there, again, it raises the level of risk that we, that some of our officers would get involved in situations that could lead to liability and so on. So I, you know, I think those are things that concern me.
Ms. Stewart?
You know, from emails and correspondence back and forth, it's my understanding that our officers are going strictly to be working with the City of North Myrtle Beach, not the City of Myrtle Beach. So why should we even vote on the City of Myrtle Beach's mutual aid agreement when they're not even going to be working in that jurisdiction anyway? It's a moot point.
Only thing I would suggest, Councilman, is in case there was an incident where those officers could cross the line, their jurisdictional boundaries are much like Anderson City and Anderson County, where we're connecting. If, even if an event did occur, they could cross that line and be covered. Some of the questions I asked Chief Webster today, along those lines, we do have an event coming to our area in the very near future. The HOG rally is coming, the Harley-Davidson Owners Group is coming to Anderson. I don't foresee any problems with that and us handling that ourselves, but should they, we need to hire additional people for that. Chief Webster said they would be the first to sign up, come up here and assist us with that. So, you know, in the near future, if we needed that type of assistance, they would be there.
It seems like most of your correspondence has been with the police chief in North Myrtle Beach. What, have you had any correspondence with the police chief in Myrtle Beach? And if so, you know, what's his take on it? Because I'm kind of like Councilman Kirby, I kind of have a problem with the language in the City of Myrtle Beach as opposed to the North Myrtle Beach.
We kind of, we drifted to North Myrtle Beach. We liked their benefits package better. They took care of, it seemed like they have a better package for the officers that are going to be working down there, all around.
What happens if we've got these two agreements, and you say that we need, in cases up, that comes up and they have to go down to Myrtle Beach to do something, well, does then, does the compensation provisions in the Myrtle Beach agreement kick in in addition to the North Myrtle, or is it divided up, or what?
We would still be operating under North Myrtle Beach, under their authority. And that's pretty standard, even around here. Our mutual aid agreement we have with Oconee County, we have a different type one with Oconee County. We do not have to be in contact with Oconee County to do enforcement in that jurisdiction, nor here. By our kind of agreement we have with Anderson County, we have to be with Anderson County when we're out within Anderson County. In this instance, our officers will be with a North Myrtle Beach police officer at all times. They're not going to work by themselves. So if they go somewhere and they have to go somewhere in a car, they'll be in the car with a North Myrtle Beach officer.
Even if they have to go to the Myrtle Beach, the, that North Myrtle Beach officer's going to accompany them down to Myrtle Beach.
Right. We will, we will never be alone. The officer will never be by themselves, answering any type of call for service.
Is there a mutual aid agreement between Myrtle Beach and North Myrtle Beach? And if so, which form do they use?
I would have to speculate on that, that they do have one. Due to the fact, you know, it's chopped up, and there's actually another beach, Atlantic Beach is in between Myrtle and North, and it kind of surrounds. But as I talked to him today, Chief Webster, he says, you know, they do assist the other agencies, with Atlantic Beach being that tiny isolated area surrounded by North Myrtle Beach, that they will answer calls for service and assist.
Anything else, Gus?
Mayor?
Tomlin?
You know, I think it's a, it's a good thing for morale with our, it seems like there were a lot of people that were interested in going. Is that correct?
Ten officers.
Yeah. You know, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
First by Mr. Horrigan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Chapman. Further discussion?
I just, you know, I'd just like to add one thing. I don't know who all is going, what their tenure is here, but I know that we've had a lot of turnover on our police department. We've, I guess, our rank and file, I guess, we've got a lot of people who's been here last for two or three years. And I just want to make sure that the people who are volunteering and going down there is the right people in the right settings, because someone who hasn't been on the force a long time and going to a big crowd like this, if something comes up, they may not have the experience, know how to handle that situation, and we don't want to put that officer, you know, in harm's way. So I just ask that we be careful who's selected to go down there, based upon their experience here with the City of Anderson.
Councilman, I will say Captain McCone's going down as the lead, and he'll be in charge down there with our guys. Captain Walters is also going, and you'll have a lieutenant, two sergeants, and two other officers with at least five years' experience. We will have, three of our newest officers will have only three with two years' experience.
Regardless if they are working in another jurisdiction, they still have to represent the City of Anderson with professionalism and abide by our policies. And I make sure that...
Ms. Horrigan?
And, you know, I'm not, I have confidence in our police officers, that when they go out of town, they know how to behave. And so that's why I'm making a motion.
I know as long as Captain McCone is there, they're going to act right.
Great. And I kind of lost track. My original question to the chief was, you know, I think, especially in Myrtle Beach, the mayor of Myrtle Beach was reaching out to the governor about additional help, you know, during that week. And I think, even though it's down on the coast, Myrtle Beach is very important to the state in regards to economic development. And I think, it appears to me that probably the municipal police reached out to their friends across the state to get some extra help down there, but I think all in all, it's a good thing. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Let's do, this was on the Myrtle Beach, and I need a motion on North Myrtle Beach.
I'll make a motion if we adopt them, the North Myrtle Beach.
We have, first by the mayor pro tem.
Second.
Seconded by John Roberts.
Question, hold on, both.
Discussion?
Is this agreement, once we vote on it and it passes, is it, from here on out, is it come back for us each and every year?
I think it's five years.
Five years. Five-year agreement.
I think one of them is longer than the other.
One is five years, one is just for this year.
I think there's an expiration date at the back of that, that I read, that it says, I believe in the agreement, that it has to be voted on again, should, you know, we assist next year. next year.
Can we get that to you, Mr. Clay?
Yep. Good question.
That's a good question.
We'll get that information back to council.
North Myrtles, just for that time. Item one A. It specifies the, the dates.
That one is like five years, runs from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty.
Any other discussion? You okay? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed. The, the request for Myrtle Beach, North Myrtle Beach, passage in Anderson's too. Thank you, guys. Thanks, chief. Cap, appreciate it. Before we get administrative briefing, I see some Girl Scouts in the audience. Want to tell us, you got a spokesman? What troop, what you doing? What troop are you?
So, we are troop two-nine-seven-seven and we are here to complete a Girl Scouts Bronze Award and listening to this was part of the award. And I'm Mary. I'm Nina. I'm Riley.
Well, welcome. I hope you learned something. Thanks for being here. Good. Thank you, girls. Appreciate it. All right.
Excuse me. Can I speak on fifteen oh-two South McDuffie?
Just postpone the next meeting, your public hearing at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. It'll be on the agenda next time. Come back. Administrative briefing, Ms. Moore.
Just a couple of things. In your package, you have the quarterly progress report. I know that's a lot to digest. We won't take up tonight's meeting. What we'd like to do in the next two, three weeks, we'll schedule a lunchtime where you can be away from this business and just focus on some of your retreat projects and some of the other major projects. We'll cover those quickly and let you ask some questions. But take a look at it if you have any. We'll certainly answer those immediately. As far as the calendar, busy week coming up, we have actually three events in Carolina Renn Park this week. Two of those are city-sponsored events, being the Sounds in the Park on Wednesday and then Friday's movie night. We have Big Hero Six will be the, the movie. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate and then the Block Party. We had a very successful opening event last Thursday and they'll be in their second event. And then later on in the month, a very important event for downtown, that's Arts on the Town. And one of the things that we'll be doing as part of that will be, Linda, what's the actual term? It's the.
Oh, art sculpture. You'll have to fill this.
Yeah.
Sculpture tour.
The tour of the public arts sculptures. So, you want to be, hopefully you'll be available to do those. So, those are the two things, Mr. Mayor, we have in, in administrative briefing.
Thank you, sir. We also have an executive session, contractor matters. Anything? I may not know.
We have a property acquisition we'd like to discuss. I do not expect any action, maybe just some direction from the council. And we have an economic development opportunity. We need to look at a possible economic development or development agreement. So, don't expect any action on either one of those tonight. Just need some direction from the council.
Good. I'd entertain a motion to go in executive session. First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Harvey. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed. We stay in executive session.
We'll stay in here.